Okay, Mr. Harp, do we have a closed session report?
Yes, and this is from the special meeting. There's no closed session report from the special meeting. Thank you.
Okay. So, the special meeting is closed and adjourned, and I will call the order, meeting to order for the April 13 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. So now we're on to current business, and the first item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Brenner, do you need clarification regarding any item on the consent calendar? Councilmember O'Neill?
None.
Councilmember Dixon?
None.
Councilmember Blom?
None.
Councilmember Duffield? Mayor Pro Tem Muldoon?
None.
And I have none. The next item is a proclamation for National Library Week. And I've got a proclamation here somewhere. We have Mr. Heatherton here.
Hi, Mayor, and members of the council. On behalf of the staff, and the foundation, and the friends of the library, and Newport Mesa Pro- 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 Litt- 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 I'd like to thank you for your continued support. We have a full complement of trustees tonight, including our Chair, Paul Watkins, who'd like to make a few comments, and thanks very much.
Great, thank you.
Now a good time, Mr. Mayor?
Now's a great time, Paul. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I am Paul Watkins. I'm Chair of the Board of Library Trustees, and I want to thank you for the proclamation that we're about to hear. Instead of National Library Week, I kind of think of our library and its great facilities National Library Year every year. We are indeed the cultural, educational, and informational heart of this community. I'd like to acknowledge, if you have just a moment, Mrs. Elizabeth Starr, who is here. She can wave, Elizabeth. Mrs. Starr and Mr. Starr, but for them, the library facility wouldn't be nearly what it is today. They're responsible single-handedly, really, for the great facilities we have to offer to our community. I'd like to acknowledge a couple of board members as well, Doug Coulter and Barbara Gladman, and our two-time past Chair, Janet Ray, is here as well. The... You know, I'd like to, I'd like to thank the council, first of all, for, for their support, and in particular, I'd like to thank council persons Dixon and Brenner and O'Neill for having undergone that wonderful videotaping this past week, or for reading to the children. That was really outstanding. Each one of you did a great job. Also like to compliment our city manager, Grace Leong, and her very handsome son, Miles, for the job that they did. And, and she's changed out of her pajamas today, I note, which is, which is good. And also like to thank Carol Jacobs for doing an outstanding job. Tim Heatherdon has an outstanding staff. I don't think they're here today, but they include Rebecca Lightfoot, and Melissa Hartson, and Debbie Walker. Now that, those videos frankly would have been possible without our librarian from Corona del Mar, Annika Helmoth, having done an Academy Award-winning job of producing, directing, and editing each of those videos. Wasn't she great? She was fantastic. So I wanted to especially acknowledge her. So thank you again for the proclamation, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Paul, for just everything you've done for the library and for this community. It's extraordinary, and libraries certainly are the touchstone for, for every community they're in, and especially here in Newport Beach. This is, this library stands out by far just because of the investment that the public has made into it, our city, the foundation, the board members, all the personnel, the staff, management. It's an incredible resource, and I think it's really been helpful and continued to be helpful through the pandemic, and I'm sure it's great to see people back in the library and the full use of the, of the facility going on. So it's, it's an extraordinary place, and the way we outreach to the community with all the other libraries in the various villages is very important as well. So I've got a proclamation here, and I'll read it, and it's: "Whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and campuses, serving their communities; and whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of belonging and community; and whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources; and whereas, for people lacking broadband at home, libraries provide access to computers and Wi-Fi; and whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve, and ensure equity access for all; and whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access to technology, multimedia content, and educational programs; and whereas, in times of crisis, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities both in person and virtually; and whereas, to adopt our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons; and whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting free exchange of information and ideas for all; and whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community; and whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. And now therefore I, Brad Avery, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim National Library Week. And during this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library online to access the resources and services. Because of you, libraries transform lives and communities." And so, thank you. I'll move down here to the- The next item is a proclamation for DMV Donate Life California Month. Do we have someone here? Great.
Good afternoon, Mayor Avery.
Good afternoon.
And city council members. My name's Rita Jackson, and I'm actually a One Legacy Ambassador, but more importantly, I'm Jasmine's mom. This is Jasmine. Jasmine actually chose to register to be a donor when she was 17 and got her driver's license. She was the kind of person that would want to help everybody and anybody. She spent all her life trying to figure out ways of helping others. Sadly, only three years after she registered to be a donor, she collapsed in my arms and stopped breathing. Jasmine passed away just weeks before her 21st birthday. She died of a pulmonary embolism. It was really difficult for me to think that my 20-year-old daughter, my only child, would never see her graduation from college, getting married, having children. Those years, first years, were really difficult. What actually got me through them is the fact that Jasmine did register, and she did become a donor, and through her tissue donation, she has actually helped over 30 people. On her second anniversary, April 25th of 2015, I received a letter from one of those recipients. It was an 18-year-old girl that was writing me to thank me for Jasmine's donation, and wanted to let me know that because of Jasmine, her ACL was repaired. She had torn it running track during high school. But she did wait two years to write that letter because she wanted to give me the great news that because of Jasmine, she actually got a college scholarship. So because of people like Jasmine that have registered to be a donor, there's a young girl out there that is fulfilling all of her dreams, and a lot more people like her. We are losing about 17 people per day that are on the waiting list for a life-saving organ, and I just hope that everyone listening to my story will realize that registering not only saves the lives of others, but it can actually help you through that time of grieving when you've lost a loved one. So I have to thank you again for proclaiming April Donate Life Month, and please go to donatelifecalifornia.org. You can read Jasmine's story and lots of stories like hers, read about recipients that are so grateful to be alive, and please consider registering. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we're all so sorry for your loss, and it is wonderful to know that her, her contributions have helped so many people.
Jasmine loved your city, I have to say that. I personally requested to adopt your city because we were planning a trip for her 21st birthday. We were renting a house right on oceanfront, and we came down here in September the year before to pick out a house. We spent the afternoon having lunch and walking around, and she was so excited about her 21st birthday being in Newport Beach. Sadly, she passed away literally three weeks before her birthday, but I have to thank you for doing this, and I love Newport Beach, so I come down here often. Thank you so much.
Thank you, we appreciate it. It's wonderful to have you. And I'll read the proclamation. "Whereas organ, eye tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expression of compassion to those in need; and whereas more than 108,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 21,000 in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And on average, 17 people die each day while waiting; and whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African American communities; and whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, and pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives; and whereas donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others; and whereas deceased organ donors saved more than 33 lives last year, 33,000 lives last year, the most ever; and whereas any person can register to be an organ, eye, tissue donor regardless of age or medical condition; and whereas over 17 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California donor registry to ensure their wishes to be an organ, eye, and tissue donors are honored; and whereas California residents can sign up to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor when applying for renewing their driver's licenses or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles; and whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California donor registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or for Spanish speakers, www.donvidaCalifornia.org. Whereas California residents interested in saving a life through living kidney donation are encouraged to visit www.livingdonationcalifornia.org. Now therefore, it is resolved that I, Brad Avery, Mayor of the City of Newark Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as DMV Donate Life Month." Okay, our next item is a presentation about the Crystal Cove cottages. We have Kate Wheeler, President and CEO of the Crystal Cove Conservancy, in attendance to provide a presentation.
Hi. Mayor, city council members, thanks so much for the invitation. I'm really glad to be here today to share an update with you on our work at Crystal Cove. We always like to start with an acknowledgement that the unceded traditional lands of the Ahashaman and Tongva tribal nations comprise what we now call Crystal Cove. Many of you know Crystal Cove because you hike the back country, you walk the beaches early in the morning, you paint there when the light is just right, you bring your out-of-town guests, your college roommates, your visitors there to visit whenever they're in town. You know Crystal Cove and many of its secrets. What you may not know is how the disparate pieces of this one place come together to ensure that the whole of Crystal Cove, 2,400 acres of backcountry habitat, more than three miles of coastal, of mostly undeveloped coastline and coastal bluffs, the 1,100-acre marine-protected area, and our beloved cottages are protected forever. Because we hold the concession contract in the park, we're both the nonprofit partner and the concessionaire, revenue from both cottage rentals and food service stays right there in the park, supporting our work to protect, preserve, and to educate. The cottages and food service provide revenue and facilities that support our STEM education programs while also supporting ongoing maintenance of the historic structures. In turn, our education programs, while developing young scientists' minds and cultivating their connections to our planet, provide truly engaging science education, and they're all grounded, all of these programs are grounded in ongoing environmental research and habitat restoration projects. Data these students collect in turn informs land managers' decisions about critical conservation questions and helps us protect the essential habitats in the park. So far with California State Parks, we've restored 28 of the 46 historic cottages and the Japanese-language schoolhouse. The cottages at Crystal Cove didn't actually start out as cottages. In the 1910s and 20s, Crystal Cove was a haven for summer tent campers. I've got the wrong ones here. Here's our STEM education programs. Here's our tent campers. So in the 1910s and 20s, Crystal Cove was, it was a haven for summer tent campers. Families came from all over, they brought tents, big canvas ones, that they packed up in trucks and station wagons and trailers, and they set up for months. Eventually cottage kits were ordered from places like Sears and Roebuck and set up year-round. Basic one-room cottages began to be added on to, and over time, without plans and with materials that were either easy to find or already on hand, the cottages just sort of became. This way of building without plans and with materials on hand is called vernacular architecture, and the cottages at Crystal Cove were actually one of the last remaining intact examples of vernacular architecture on the Pacific coast. Another you can find at Sherman Gardens. So because of the way they, they were built, these cottages are particularly vulnerable to the elements. There are 17 cottages still left to restore on the North Beach. Because of where they sit nestled on the bluff, directly on the beach, and surrounded by our fragile habitats, these last 17 cottages are the most difficult and the most costly to restore. We've completed all of the necessary infrastructure improvements, including stabilization of the bluffs, installation of modern utilities, the installation of a 650-foot-long boardwalk, and service path, which you can see taking shape there. With, that'll provide ADA access both to the site and to the beach. And in November, restoration of the first four cottages on the North Beach began. These first four cottages will open as five overnight rental units, one as a duplex, in the first half of 2022. Ultimately, the completion of the North Beach project will result in doubling our overnight capacity at Crystal Cove and quadrupling the funds available to support education and conservation programs. And it's important to note that all of this happens while we keep rates between $19 and $39 per night, per person, in cottages that sleep up to eight people. As the nonprofit partner to Crystal Cove State Park, we share their mission to protect the cultural and natural resources of Crystal Cove, and during this restoration, that remains our highest priority. And I will say that the process ensures that it does. The entire plan for the park, the Preservation and Public Use Plan, the PUP, as we call it, was the result of an extensive two-year planning effort by California State Parks, stakeholders, and the community. And the North Beach restoration, once it's complete, will mark the completion of that plan. The project's impact on the environment has been fully reviewed, including an environmental impact report, Coastal Commission Development Report, Coastal Commission Coastal Development Permit, and a review by tribal leadership identified by the Native American Heritage Commission, including Ahashaman and Tongva tribal nation leaders. Even with the PUP in hand, it took more than five years to secure permits for this phase of the project due to this kind of rigorous review. But in the end, we reserved, we received our coastal development permit in 2017, and the entire project has been designed to meet 2050 guidelines for sea level rise, meaning that these cottages will last and will support education programs for years to come. Just going to skip back to those photos that were out of order. Sorry about that. Here we go. Today, our STEM education programs, where you can get a feel for here, are supported by cottage revenue, and we serve more than 10,000 students each year. While field trips to Crystal Cove have always been an important part of our programs, they're a really important element, our programs have always been more than simply field trips. We use the, the park's diverse ecosystems as outdoor classrooms and learning labs, and when students visit the park, they get to work, because of our partnerships with UCI and California State Parks, they work side-by-side with researchers and environmental scientists to tackle environmental problems like native plant restoration, beach erosion, and the health of the marine-protected area. Each field experience at Crystal Cove is bracketed by as many as 15 in-class lessons and teacher professional development that emphasize scientific practices like data analysis, modeling ecosystems, and critical thinking. Our programs, which are currently for 5th through 12th graders, but we have a pilot planned for K through 2 next year, they scaffold students' identities as scientists throughout their, their schooling careers, bringing them back to Crystal Cove over and over again. Most of our students come from the most under-resourced schools in our communities. More than 70% come from Title I schools. More than half of our students identify as Latinx. 45% speak a language other than English at home. When the, when COVID hit last year, we immediately began adapting our programs for distance learning. We have since adapted all of those programs and our professional development for teachers for distance learning so that we could continue to work with students over this difficult time. One of the cottages on the North Beach, if I can get to it, out of order. Oh, there it is. One of the cottages on the North Beach, this is cottage number 20, will be designed to operate as a hostel-style dorm with open beds, and that will host coastal engineering programs for high school students. So students will get to come and evaluate beach change and study coastal erosion and coastal engineering principles while they sleep just a few feet from the ocean. It all really comes together in an amazing way, just sort of like the cottages did. So I'm sure that I've used every second that I was allotted, so I will just stop by saying thank you. Thank you to city council for your support. Thank you to everyone here for the way that, in which you care about the community. It really is a privilege for us to be able to help protect it. Thank you so much.
Great, Ms. Wheeler. Nice presentation, and what a beautiful place that is. Okay, the next item- Mayor? Yes? I have to recuse myself of this due to real property reasons. Thank you, Mr. Blom. Thanks. Our next item is a discussion of Balboa Island drainage. And any other recusals? We're ready to roll.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Yes, we're ready to roll. Today we have Jim Houlihan, our Deputy Director and City Engineer, and Bob Stein, our Assistant City Engineer, to talk a little more in-depth about a project we've been talking about for a couple of years now and introducing. This has to do with reformatting the way we drain Balboa Island to address it and provide better safety protection and flood protection. So we have a presentation, and I'll let Bob go ahead and jump into that, and then we can take questions.
We're going to present some concepts.
All right, thank you. On, as Dave suggested, drainage improvements for Balboa Island, specifically how we can protect the island from flooding during intense rainstorms and high-tide events. And so the first slide here shows some of the streets of, of interest here. Balboa Island, of course, is separated from the little island by Grand Canal. Park Avenue runs from the Park Avenue Bridge all the way to the west to the Collins Island Bridge. Balboa Avenue is also another major road on the east side of the island, and then Collins Avenue cuts vertically across the island. So this is an exhibit that shows the elevations on Balboa Island. Balboa Island is the lowest island in the bay, and let's start with the land side. You see the reddish-brown colors. That elevation is about elevation nine. You note that the, on the east side of the island, it's mainly yellow. That's about elevation seven, but you see some orange, that's about elevation eight. And those elevations are the property elevations, not the finished floor elevation of the houses, which could be several feet higher. So the, the east side of the island is higher than the west side, which is predominantly green, which is an elevation six. But also note that the light blue in the streets that are on the west end, that's about elevation five. So when we have rain events, there is a slight tendency for the water to go from the high side, which is the east end, toward the west end, but the grades are very mild, and so the water takes, takes a while to flow in that direction. It's not a predominant flow pattern. So the issue we have here is that high tides are often much higher than the surrounding bayfront or street elevations. So high tides range from four and a half to seven feet, but occasionally we get these super king tides that are eight feet. This picture was, I believe, taken in 2011, and you can see that the water level is almost to the top of the seawall, and you notice that the bay, bayfront is about two and a half to three feet lower. So here's the problem, that when we have these high tides that are much higher than the, than the sidewalks, that you have the situation where the baywater wants to back up through the storm drains, out the catch basins, and into the streets, the opposite of normally how we want to drain the island. how we want to drain the island. So what we do is we have these tide gates, tide valves around the island that we shut every time there's a high tide. The triangles along the periphery of Balboa Island are the tide valve locations. We have twenty-five of those tide valves, and each of those tide valves has a storm drain pipe that goes into the bay. And you'll note that a lot of these drains that come out are in the popular beach areas along the north and south sides of the island. So when tides get above four point five feet, staff go out, and they shut these tide gates, starting on the west side because that's the lowest side. And these tide gates, we have two types. One of these manually operated gates with a valve key, and we have a few that are motor operated. And for these tide valves, the operator goes out there and flips a switch locally. So there is a manual operation that's still required. And in the upper right-hand corner, you see one of our staff people going out. He's got this valve key, and he turns it around, and it lowers the valve and shuts off the gate, and then closes off that storm drain so you don't have the water flowing back into the streets. We have high tides almost every day, sometimes twice a day, and we estimate about sixteen hundred labor hours every year for staff to come out to open and close these valves, rain or shine. But what happens when we close the tide gates and it rains? Well, the water has no place to go, and it accumulates in the street. This, I believe, was back in 2010. You can see that the water is starting to overtop the curb. And of course, the concern is that in a very intense rainstorm, the water will start encroaching into people's yards and potentially into people's homes. A recent photo, Thanksgiving 2019, I'm not sure which street this is, looks like kind of on the east end. And notice the cottage, the white cottage, you can see that it's built at the original elevation, and probably if the water rose nine to twelve inches, it would be definitely flooding into that person's house. And about, I would say, ten percent of the homes on Balboa Island are still the cottage Some additional photos here. The one on the right shows flooding on Turquoise Avenue. Again, you can see that the water is starting to overtop the curb. And on the left side, we have flooding on Balboa Avenue at Marine Avenue. Even though this is the high side of the island, the intensity of the rain was so hard that the water was not allowed to really drain off that quickly. And of course, the concern is that as soon as you have overtopping into a home, you have immediate damage to walls, rugs, to floors. So it's kind of a threshold disaster, if you will. But so far, we've been lucky, for the most part, that flooding has been contained in the streets. So what we do when the high tides, when we have high tides and tide valves are shut, and it starts raining, we send out crews, and they come out with trucks with portable pumps in the back. They put the intake line at the street end, they put the discharge line in the bay, and they start pumping. And they pump down the water as best they can, and once it's drier, they move to the next street end, and they keep working that until they've contained the flooding and probably the tides have fallen by that time. This could happen over a dozen times a year. Often happens at night. There's a lot of overtime involved, and it's cold, wet work. I've been out there one time, and it's unpleasant. During wet years, maybe eight to nine hundred labor hours are spent pumping just on Balboa Island. Of course, we have other tide valves around the harbor, but a significant amount of manpower is dedicated toward Balboa Island. With climate change, we'd expect that with sea level rise, the tide gates will be closed for longer periods of time. We might also expect more intense storms, so we can see that we're going to need larger pumps and bigger crews in order to handle the street flooding. So the proposed long-term drainage solution is to replace this manually operated tide gate system with an automated pump station, and also to install a new storm drain system that gravity drains to the new pump station. The pump station would reduce or eliminate street flooding to protect homes, vehicles, and other property. The storm drain pump station will be designed to handle flooding from a hundred-year rain event. The drainage protection is 24/7, not dependent upon calling in crews and equipment, which, of course, would greatly reduce staffing and equipment demands. There's also an additional benefit where during the dry season, we have this urban drool, which is from wash-down activities and over-irrigation. That includes potentially pesticides and herbicides, and maybe even pet waste. Right now, that water drains directly out the drains close to the beaches, and has been noted by the agencies as a potential water quality hazard. So with this new proposed automated pump station, we have a way to channel that water away and into the sanitary sewer. Back in 2019, we actually started to design on an automated pump station on Balboa Avenue adjacent to the Grand Canal. And this system was proposed to drain the quarter of the island close to the Grand Canal, perhaps as far as Amethyst. And if you look carefully, you can see that the yellow outline is where we would propose placing the pump station, underground pump station. It's a little bit tight, but it could be made to work. We also looked at where we would site the emergency generator. There was no room to put it above ground, so it would have to also be underground, not something that we like to do as engineers, but we know we can make it work by waterproofing and appropriate venting. And then, of course, we have electrical and control cabinets that all needs to be placed. Again, the boardwalk area is not an appropriate area for it, so we tentatively located it adjacent to a building. So the message here is that the street is tight, that we can make things work, but it's not optimum. There's one other thing to note here. There's a discharge line that comes from the pump station. That's the orange line discharging into the Grand Canal. The discharge line has a flap gate or a check valve in order to protect water from flowing back into the pump station during high tides. But we know we have a sand problem in the Grand Canal, that we have to periodically remove that sand, and so we would have to have a look at that operation to make sure that we always kept that discharge line clear. So this project got put on hold because Marine Avenue improvements were also delayed. So we took a step back and looked at what could we do for flood protection for the whole island, looking at different locations, including the north and south sides of the island as well as the west end. So here's a concept looking at a pump station on the south side, and it turns out it's even more problematic because not only do we have the space problems in the street locating the pump station and the control panels and the generator, we now have this long discharge line that has to cross the beach to a head wall. Now, would the head wall be nearer the beach where it might be more of a hazard to beach goers, or is it further out near the end of the pier where it might be more of a hazard to vessels? That's something we'd have to look at. But this head wall would have to be flagged with warning signs, perhaps with buoys, especially during a storm event when the pump station fired up, because you'd have this discharge of water that potentially could be a hazard to vessels. So these are all questions that would be looked at very carefully by the Coastal Commission, and we're not sure what kind of analyses they would require, and we're not even sure this would be permitted. It's kind of a cutting-edge idea here to put new outfalls into the bay. So it looks like the north and south side are really not optimum locations for the pump station. But it turns out that on the west end of Park Avenue, that looks like a very good candidate. Here, we're looking at an aerial view. You can immediately see that the street is much wider at this location. You can see that we don't have a beach area there. There's some docking areas there, but if you've been out there, you rarely see kayakers or people playing in the water. So there isn't the conflict that we would see where we're working near beach areas. The yellow outline shows the pump station location. The blue line coming down Park Avenue would be the main line feeding the pump station. And then the four green circles would be these vertical submersible pumps, and they would pump up and over through those orange lines, and then they would turn up vertically and allow the flow to bubble out. And those bubbling locations are located within the existing abutments of Collins Island Bridge. So that's actually the most interesting and enticing aspect of this design, so let's look at that.
Bob, if I could just...
Yes, sure.
...don't make sure that council understands. This is purely a concept right now. We've got lines on paper. There's not a design. Because that box can be many different angles and squares and stuff, but we just want to make sure it fits, so.
Thank you. And it's also relatively few utilities in that location, so there's good options for where we could place that. So here's an isometric here. The pump station is that big cube there, and you see the four discharge lines coming out of it. And so those lines come over and then up, and they transition from a 24-inch diameter line to a 36-inch diameter vertical tube, and then the water bubbles out, and then it flows over the existing bridge abutment into the bay. So here's what that discharged pipe looks like. We would set it at an elevation that would be higher than the anticipated water level, say, in year 2060. So we're saying about nine point five feet. And here's an artistic view of what that would look like. We're showing with a planter that covers the top of the outlets, but you can see that gap there. That's where the water would bubble up and then flow out into the bay. And here's another view, again, showing the planter raised nine or twelve inches above the top of the pipe, and then the water flows out through that opening and then over into the bay. But I want to return back to the pump station itself. The storm main is coming down Park Avenue and enters the pump station. And during the dry season, when we have this low-flow urban drool, we have two sump pumps there that will collect that and then send to the sanitary sewer. So that is really a great benefit from the water quality perspective. Then for storm flows, it flows into the wet well where we have these vertical submersible pumps. They are non-clog pumps, tube style, and the water gets pumped up, and we have these four manholes. The manholes are bolted down, and then the water flows out the horizontal discharge lines toward the Collins Island Bridge. And then, again, looking at from a top view, you can see that the four lines come out, and the construction can be done so that you're not affecting the Collins Island Bridge or its abutment. The underground pump station, these are quiet electric motors, safe discharge via bubble-up flow, no sand clogging or exposed discharge lines, and no conflict with beachgoers. So looking at the plan view again, you can see that we have the existing planters adjacent to the boardwalk. Those are ideal locations for the control panels and the generators. And so through landscaping and through aesthetic treatment, we can cover those, we can put in noise protection, and we can actually make this a nice attribute to the neighborhood. Along with the pump station, we would need to construct a gravity feed storm drain system that would all flow to the pump station. The main line in Park Avenue would be a 60-inch line that's on the west side, and then on the east side, there would be like 36-inch mains coming down Park Avenue and Balboa Avenue. And then you have these laterals that come in that are 18- to 24-inch lines. So costs. So as you might imagine, that comparing the four pump station option versus two pump stations and one pump station option, the lowest cost for pumps, the pump station is the one pump station option, $3.85 million. For that option, the storm drain system would be more expensive because you have longer lengths and you have larger diameters. But overall, the overall cost of $12.4 million is the lowest of the three options. That $12.4 million cost includes a 25% construction contingency. So the advantages for the different options. Both the two pump station option and the one pump station option have the advantages in that they avoid having discharges near beach areas and conflicts with boaters. And also, both of those options probably have lower hurdles for obtaining a coastal development permit. However, all the other advantages, low cost, best space for future maintenance, above-ground emergency generators, no check valves, discharge lines not subject to sand clogging, adequate space for electrical and control cabinets, all the advantages accrue to the one pump station option. So a summary of the recommended options, and I'll just read through these. The best option is a single pump station with capacity of 40,000 gallons per minute. This would protect the island from a hundred-year extreme rain event. 60-inch diameter storm drain would be installed along Park Avenue from Collins Avenue to the bridge. A total of 13,500 feet of new storm drain would be constructed, which would gravity drain and protect the entire island. Fifty new catch bases would be constructed. Pumps would be electric-powered with one or two onsite natural gas generators installed to provide emergency backup power, and the construction cost $12.4 million with a 25% Almost finished here. When you say Balboa Island, you immediately think construction challenges, traffic control, parking impacts. We have existing utilities that we'd have to contend with when we're putting the storm drain system in. We have groundwater to deal with. When you're constructing the storm drain system, you will have to deal with stockpiling and exporting trench material. We have to maintain Collins Isle access. Just in general, there are work constraints on the island, and of course, all work is close proximity to houses. And we put "other" there just because we know there's going to be potentially unforeseen conditions, and so the engineers will be working carefully with the contractor to identify whatever unforeseen conditions we can think of so that when we have complete construction documents, we're not surprised in the field. Funding allocation. We currently have funding for the design and the permitting. And the construction, which could start fiscal year '23, '24, $4.8 million for the pump station, '24, '25, $3.8 million for the west end storm drains, and then in fiscal year '25, '26, another $3.8 million for the east end storm drains, for a total of $12.4 million. And again, that includes the 25% construction contingency. And finally, the project schedule. We've got a long timeframe here shown for preparing the construction documents and obtaining permits. It's likely we'll be able to get the permits prior to 2023, so we'll have a shelf-ready project in case there's a remote possibility that an infrastructure bill might be able to fund this project. April 2024, we're showing construction of the pump station, which should be constructed in one season. April 2025, construct the west end storm drains, and April 2026, construct the east end storm drains. That is the last slide.
Thank you, Mr. Stein.
If I could just add just a little of this, probably to set the stage a little for folks who are just walking in this conversation, real high level, why are we doing this? It is a big question. We've been talking about Balboa Island for some time. Remember, Balboa Island is kind of our oldest island, built in the late 20s, early 30s. Unfortunately, it's our lowest island. Mr. Collins, I think, cheaped out a little when he filled the island. He didn't put enough fill in it, and we have more of a low-lying island that has flooding issues. We do know we've got... We do know we've got tidal rays going on of some sort and level, which is compounding our problem to keep the island dry. We spent a lot of resources. Mark McCoivich, by the way, is here today and he can speak to his crews, who I think the last year spent both Christmas and Thanksgiving on the island pumping through rainstorms. We spent a lot of labor there. And the other thing is with the island getting older, as we've worked with council over the years, we've been putting in new infrastructure underground. Particularly, we've been doing the streets and sewers. We've been changing those out. We've got assessment districts now, putting the utilities underground. And the residents on the island for some time have been asking for their streets replaced. So now would be the time to start looking at the last component, the drainage in there. And we feel going to an automated pump station, something that like Huntington Beach, Seal Beach developed in the sixties and seventies. A lot of places are already at this point, but we have such an old island that we're still on a gravity system. For that 24/7 protection for cost increases and just the ability to keep the island dry and protect property. We, we really think we need to go this direction. So that's why we're talking about that tonight. We've come up with a concept, we think, that is something that can be moved forward and taken over time. So with that, I'm starting to interrupt. We'll turn it over to council for questions.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Great presentation, Bob. Fun to watch. Do we have the, unless you can answer these questions, do we have the finance director here by chance? No. Do you know, so if we go through the labor costs, the 360, 360 high tide events per year, roughly 1,600 labor hours per year. That's purely in valve response, correct? That's not pumping?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have an idea of about roughly what that, those are probably fixed costs unless it's overtime. Do you have an idea about how much that annual cost is?
I don't know if we have that. Mark, I don't know if you want to answer that a little bit. There's, there's a labor cost and there's an equipment cost. We, we have quite a lot of pumps and trucks that go down there, too.
Good point. Equipment costs as well. Thank you. I'm trying to get to the real cost versus what it might not cost that much. Actually, we consider about what we're doing now.
Good afternoon, council members. Mark McCoivich, the Utilities Director. So we spend about $200,000 a year in overtime just for pumping response on the overtime. A small portion of that is the valve turning overtime, but about $200,000 total in terms of that, that cost.
So roughly the 4.44 hours per high tide event that we spend sending someone down to do the valve responses, that's not the large portion overtime. It's the pumping that's the large portion overtime. That's a flood event, like you said, Christmas or Thanksgiving where you get pulled out.
That's correct.
That's where most overtime goes to.
That's correct. Most of that overtime. So when we have a scheduled or forecasted rain event, then we schedule crews to come out if it corresponds with the high tide. And that's where most of that overtime. The other times, we do have people in the evenings, but then we do alternating schedules. Some of it may be overtime, some of it may be regular time. It just depends how we have the crews scheduled.
Okay. And so that $200,000, you can count on that happening almost every year in overtime?
That's correct.
What do you think that number would go down to if we had one of the two systems that we're looking at today? Do you still think that there'd be some, some of those overtime hours would still be required just to oversee the machinery and?
Yes, because, so part of the, you know, part of the crews go to the peninsula and then part of the crews go to the island. And it's not, it's about 50/50 in terms of where we send our resources, the peninsula versus the island. So yeah, I mean, in a rain event, you know, and I've had the experience operating pump stations before. When you do have a rain event, you know, you have all the automation in place, but you'll often send out a person, you know, kind of just in case to make sure everything's operating properly. But you can count on substantial reduction for Balboa Island if you have an automated pump station like this.
So if it's about 100 peninsula, 100 Balboa Island, an ideal scenario goes down to almost zero. Let's just say best case scenario, we're saving $100,000 overtime, the labor costs for Balboa Island.
That's true, but I just want to put it in context, too. I mean, when we send out crews, I mean, what we can handle, you know, in terms of what our pumps and our crews can handle. And you can see sometimes the trucks that come out there, too. The pumps we would like to bring out there, which are basically on a trailer and so, and so on, we can't get them there, right? Because of the streets are so small, the access issues. And so we use kind of the biggest pump we could actually fit in those spots. And we're able to get by often, but it's not what we would like to do. If I could say, if I could say it a different way, too, is, is that we could get those storm events pretty confidently for a couple, what's called a, you know, a two to five year storm event. But anything that's more intense, we're overwhelmed. And we are just frankly, just, just hoping that the tide will go down quick enough so we can open those valves up.
So you don't currently have as good of a system as you would like. Forget labor costs, just talking about your ability to handle the problem is not ideal.
That's more of a priority or a problem than it is the kind of the financial piece of it. And so it's, it's, it's that access, it's that availability, it's that size of pumping. And can we handle that, that rainwater? Those are the more concerning things.
So as your opinion, if you have the equipment that would be ideal, does likely reduce the chance of property value to the homeowners?
That's correct.
And safety issues. Okay.
Yes.
To go to.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks.
Bob, to go back to that slide where you have the one pump station scenario, do you have a two pump drawing by chance? I, I saw you have a one pump where you kind of put a master aerial.
Right. So the two pump station option would be where we would have a pump station on the west end and then also by the Grand Canal.
In that scenario, if we were to do, two, two pumps is only 100,000 more in the estimate you show. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, say it again.
The two pump option is about 100,000 more, only $100,000 more.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
In that option, if we were to do the two pump option and one of the pumps were to fail, is it possible to engineer in such a way that the other pump could pick up with the failed pump was able to do?
Not really, because we'd have the two storm drain systems pointing in different directions.
So there's no advantage to redundancy. It's just about whether or not we do two or one.
Correct.
Based on efficiency and cost and?
Correct. And then there may be more permitting complexities with the Grand Canal, but you're correct. It's, it's an option.
So, but you ultimately, even though that's only $100,000 savings, you still believe it's a, it's a smarter option, just do one pump, in your opinion?
Right. Because if you, if you look at, for instance, the maintenance, working on the west end, you can get your trucks in there. They can, they can, they can work without all the constraints that are associated with Balboa, Balboa Avenue. So from, at least from the maintenance point of view, certainly it's better to have it on Park Avenue. And there's also this, the problem that we will need check valves or flap gate for the pump station on the, adjacent to the Grand Canal. We avoid all those problems with the station on the pump, on, on the west end.
And maybe just to clarify, Councilman, when we say one pump station, there's multiple pumps within the station. So for instance, the facilities I had in Huntington Beach, we had 15 pump stations. We'd have 12 pumps in one station. You might lose one pump, the other ones are still going.
Oh, good.
So you, you break it up. I think the one you showed had four pumps.
Yes.
And usually they design them for like three or four 100 year storm. And there's another just in case you lose one. And then you also have generation on that. These would be electric pumps, so you wouldn't hear them unless they go on, for one thing. They just sit idle. And then if they do go on and one goes down or we lose power, then that's where, Bob pointed out, we have a generator and it runs on natural gas and alternative fuel system so we can keep the power going on the pumps.
That's great. So they don't always work in uniformity. So one could fail and the other three might still work.
Yeah. And you actually, when Mark runs them, he'll run one, two, three, and they'll rotate to change the wear on them. So they all kind of wear evenly.
That's nice. What is the advantage of two pumps then?
Two pump stations?
Yeah, two pump stations.
It's better than four pump stations. And there's, and there's clearly less maintenance when you have less pump stations. And it's, so Dave, you may want to jump in here. We can make two pump stations work, but we're heavily leaning toward the one pump station option.
I, I think the option, we wanted to look at all of them. We looked at four. And it's just not the cost equation, as Bob pointed to. It's the sighting of these systems. When you look at that one we showed on, we actually started over on Balboa by Marine Avenue. That's a tight street and we have to get a control panel in there and some other things. So it would be tight to sight it, more visible degradation. And then trying to discharge this item into the, I mean, you've got to flow a jet coming out of it and you're putting in the Grand Canal. So you have beach erosion problems and things. The same sighting happens on the, on the sides, if I caught that right. Got long pipes going out, extending into the bay. There's usually a head wall that holds that pump line down. And how's that become a navigational issue? I'm not quite sure. We haven't worked those details out. But the, when it, when you start looking at the geography and you see everything kind of slopes to the west end and then you, you're familiar with where Park Avenue ends, it's very wide down there. The fact that the water's going there and you have a wide street to work with made sense. It would probably make more sense just to do one pump station down there. Now, these are estimates, I'm guessing, Bob, on the size. And you could probably tighten it up on the size of the pipes and things. The cost may be able to be tightened up once you get into the design level. But we do feel the one pump station would probably be a better idea right now.
Okay. And, and it makes sense to me. And then the last question is, once, what, one pump station gets installed, it's maintained. You also integrate a replacement to the manual valve system? It's all, it's all one.
So that, that's an excellent point. So once the pump station is installed, we dismantle all those tide gates and we dismantle all those 25 drains draining out into the beaches. And so now we've cleaned up the beaches and we've, you know, it's just a, it's just a.
They're not needed anymore.
We don't need them anymore. We take them out.
That's actually a good point because the seawall is up for replacement down the road. And all those drains, if we keep them, will have to be replaced. So there's a cost to put them all back, all the pipes going out in the bay. I don't know what that cost is, but that cost would be deferred. You just put the, like they did on Bay Island, you just put the sheet wall around it and you're done. So, and then we just basically change the slope. You're going to do all the streets eventually replace, so you change the grading.
That's interesting, yeah. So there's a great save in there, too.
Good point.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Neil.
Could you go to the slide that had the, that showed the, where the, the lines were?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that one. Nope, sorry.
Oh. The whole island, right at the beginning, right?
Yeah. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. You had a, you had a gravity, you showed where.
Oh, yes, sorry. Got it. Where is that? Oh, I see. It's the other direction, okay.
That one. Okay. All right. So if we did a one pump option, I guess there's, here's, here's my handful of questions. The first one is, you know, what, what, what would it look like for maintenance on an ongoing cost schedule? How are all these streets going to get essentially torn up? And in order to put the, put the, the piping below them?
I mean, that's really, you know, an excellent question. So to install these pipes, it's either by open trench method or by micro tunneling. And micro tunneling, you have a, I actually have a slide on this. Let me pull that up here. Up. IT.
Slow down.
Okay. So I'm going to have to flip to the very end here. More careful. All right. So you have a, a launch shaft and a reception, a reception shaft. These are pits. And then you able to jack your pipe underground between those two pits. So that would be the preferred method of construction. You, the, the main thing you have to worry about is existing utilities. And are, there are some areas where we have crossing utilities that would be very close to the proposed alignment. And so in those areas where we had some sensitivity, you would have to do some open trench construction.
If I could just caution, it may not be the preferred. It's, it is a method. There are problems with micro tunneling and it doesn't fit everywhere. We want to evaluate the street that we're going to go down, whether we're going to open cut it or micro tunnel. Recognize, too, some of the streets like Park Avenue has basically reached its useful life. When you go down there, the curbs are undulated, the pavement has problems and we have ADA problems. So we might end up taking the street anyway, which i.e. the pipeline construction might be cheaper at that point.
Yeah. That's, I, I mean, that's not surprising. I was actually, I was even looking at Balboa Avenue this weekend and was noticing the cracks and whatnot on, on some of the street there. So it may end up being that we've got some overdue maintenance work on some of the streets anyway. So, but then, okay, so we have, that's interesting. Yeah, you're right. I mean, this is, this is clearly going to be difficult. You, you all did the water main under Park last, was it last year?
Yeah. Maybe three years ago, we put a new 12 inch down there.
Yeah.
And there's several trenches. And then you look at the median, it's kind of shot. It needs to be rebuilt. The sidewalks don't meet ADA. We have to figure out, if we touch the street illegally, we have to figure out the ADA on it. So you've got a lot of work on there for a 100 year old island. You know, the storm drain is going to cut the street open, but you're probably going to end up replacing the pavement at some point anyway.
Okay. And then Collins Bridge, don't we, don't we technically own Collins Bridge? So if we touch it to do this, is there going to be more work to be done?
Can I answer?
Well, the beauty is that we are not going to be touching the bridge itself or the supporting abutments. So it's more than technically, we actually own the bridge. We took over ownership. But the bridge is in good condition. And I talked to some of our building folks and they, we got probably 35 years left on that bridge. So the, the bridge will not be impacted by this proposed project.
I think, I'm sorry, there is a discussion there, though, because it is in okay condition, but do we want to do something with it? We, we've scratched our head why we own Collins Bridge because it goes to a private island. Somewhere down in 58, I think, the council accepted the bridge. Maybe there's a solution that we've even talked about, maybe pushing the pump station out there and using some of that area for it, so.
Okay. When, last, I guess, shoot, I guess I've got the last two points. One is I do support an option that does not puncture seawalls. So clearly the, this one does, the others do. Or I'm sorry, this doesn't puncture, the others seem to. So I do, I like the idea of not puncturing seawalls right now. The other is, so can you go to the slide that shows the finances? So the 1.6 million for design? Yeah, that one. So after, after we get to that 1.6, during that 1.6 process, I should say, that's when we're going to be figuring out the issues that you're talking about on ADA and streets and, and whatnot, Dave?
That will design the pump station and the underground storm drains, as I understand it. But the street will be another design. We'll have to determine how to, truthfully, I don't know how to handle park yet. I don't know how to make it all fit within that right away. We've talked about sidewalk on one side, sidewalk on the other, you know, maybe squeezing the median to make the parking and sidewalks work. Haven't gotten that for you.
Well, don't we need to get that far, though? I mean, I, I, I'm not really sure. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it doesn't strike me as a great idea for us to approve moving forward on a, on a project underneath the ground that would require an above ground solution, but we don't have the solution for the above ground yet.
We could include that. We could come up with some profiles of how park might look when we're done. So we could put the pipe in the right spot and then say, when we're done, we'll come back and reconstruct the street to this dimension, basically.
All right. I got to think on that one. Thanks.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this a couple, few questions? Because a lot of my questions have been answered with the previous questions. Is this the item that's on the agenda tonight on the consent calendar?
There's an item for design tonight to.
So that's the 1.6?
Yes.
Yeah.
700,000.
Yeah. It's, 1.6 was the entire design, but the tonight, the 700,000 for.
Just initial? Just getting it started?
The, the item today would cover the design for the pump station and the storm drain on the west end of the island.
Not the entire island.
Not the eastern side.
Is there any resiliency grants that are available from the federal government or state government?
There weren't. We've applied a couple of times. I believe Bob was actually the player for that for FEMA grants. It's usually the hazard mitigation monies we're looking for. But with the new infrastructure bills coming and maybe the new thought on how to protect us, we might be able to find some. We'd surely want to find grant money if we could. And this would qualify, I think, if you could get the feds to look at it and say, look at the housing you're protecting by adding a pump station or.
Well, I agree. I mean, FEMA, I mean, for the last couple of years anyway, has talked about getting ahead of the floods and getting ahead of the problems related to flooding. And so resiliency is the word that they use to make sure that it's protected and localities can return to functioning. So anyway, you've already looked into that and they?
Well, we just recently looked into it and we talked to the staff at FEMA and there's different programs. And they did not encourage us.
Really? Why?
They have better candidates, I think. The east coast, they keep hugging all the money.
Florida, Texas. Okay. Back to the street issue. I'm very aware of the street issues because what's going on on Balboa Peninsula and Lido, et cetera. And, and the project's been going very fine. I have no criticisms. But the way it's been done, and so kudos to staff, how you've piecemealed it around Lido Island. And so the inconvenience has been temporary and there's ways to get around. And you've done that very well. Is that possible on Balboa Island? Would you piecemeal it? I mean, one, few blocks at a time, so the whole street isn't out of commission, for example, and reroute traffic and get it around?
I think that's very doable. The nice, the one, the bad thing about Balboa is, you know, it's very tight. The good news is that you have park and Balboa parallel streets. You have alleys. When we're working the street, people wouldn't use the alleys. There's lots of circulation. We'd have to do segments at a time. There's lots of circulation, we'd have to do segments at a time. So the hardest one, I think, and Bob would lay out, is that it's going to be that backbone from the pump station up Park, that's the deepest and largest line. The other lines, I think you've got 36, 24-inch lines, and those go relatively shallow and quick. Have you seen some of our pipeline jobs? You can go pretty quick on that. So the Park element will probably be the toughest.
So 36 inches as the diameter of the pipe?
That's the diameter of the pipe.
So that's collecting all of the storm drain that gets pumped there, and the gravity flow brings it all into the west one large giant pipe?
Yeah, that's the diameter of one pipe. The one I think Bob was referring to on Park would be 60-inch, if I recall.
Yeah, might be a little bit less.
Might be a little bigger. We store water in the pipe, too, we want to make sure the?
What's the, I mean, is worst-case scenario that we exceed, the flow of water exceeds the pipe, how does that get managed?
So we're designing this for a 100-year storm event, actually probably for a 200-year rain event. So every 200 years, there might be an issue, but otherwise, we'd be able to handle any kind of rain event that we would normally see. The one, the big storm we had in December 8th, 2018, that was a 75-year storm event, and that was very, very high intensity, if you remember that rain event.
Yeah.
So we, we would have a very robust system.
Okay, so back to the thought about the peninsula, are you anticipating at some point in time that you, we will be doing the same type of thing to concentrate the pump situation, because you're doing manual storm drain release on the peninsula?
We, we've discussed the peninsula, it's a little different, because as you know, all the street ends into the bay, and it's not circular like the island, so I don't know how to connect all the street ends, because they're up against the bulkhead, but we've talked about smaller pumps on certain ones, like 19th Street's a key one, they get a lot of water there. Maybe there, there's a small pump station there, maybe we can run some kind of perimeter line, but that would be the next step, that, that, we got to do the big island. The little island would need some similar treatment at some point, because it has the same problems, and then the peninsula is surely in the, the high flood areas.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do you have any other council members that wish to speak? I think this may be the time for Balboa Island to gain nation status, considering the drainage, the streets, and the seawalls, and our future underwriting all that. But I, I just had one question. So we're going to collect all the runoff from the streets and then pump it into the bay, is there any filtration involved with that, trying to capture everything that streets contain?
Well, for the low flow, as I mentioned, we're going to capture that and send it to the sanitary sewer.
Right.
And there would be, have some kind of screening ability for that flow per sanitation requirements. But for the, we have screens and, and some other devices within the pump station to remove the grit that you'd find in stormwater flow.
Right, and things like oils and?
You'd definitely have a cleaner flow. Typically, on a pump station, it goes through a screening device, so the tries, Bob has lots of devices around town, the CDS. We're taking out the trash, the cups and all that now. Right now, that's not being screened out. And then usually the pump station has a well in it, so the grit and sand and stuff settles at the bottom, and the oil's at the top, and you kind of pump that midstream water.
Right, well, that's good. That's great. Thank you. All right. Are there any calls? No calls. All right, do we have any further comment on this item? Oh, I don't know. Yeah? All right, seeing none, and like, we have no recommendations from council to staff? Kevin, you've got one, all right, go ahead.
Thank you. I did think the labor costs were going to be higher than what I heard on the podium. I wonder if you might come back and bring a brief report, simply says what those costs might be expected, and maybe, maybe it'll actually require less resource, and we've addressed the peninsula as well, I don't know. And then also, maybe we would eliminate a position through natural retirement that we would need to fill, and that would be part of the calculation as well to offset these costs. So I, I would like to get there for really technology, safety reasons, but it'd be nice to know what the, the real cost is going to be, and I think that's a part of it. Thank you.
Great, anything else? Yeah, I asked for public comment. Do we have it? Anyone in the community room? All right, seeing none. We'll go ahead and get public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Mayor Avery, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Earlier in the meeting, item SS 2, you issued a proclamation expressing your appreciation to the city library system, which is an appreciation that I share. But if one looks at the city's online calendar, one will see that the Board of Library Trustees, which is the group that was here this afternoon that administers our library, their meeting is scheduled on the same day, at the same hour, as the meeting of the Aviation Committee, which is another matter that many people in, in the public are interested in. And when one sees two important meetings scheduled at the same day and hour, one imagines the city finds that one of the, one or the other is dispensable, which I don't think is the message that we want to communicate. Since they're both meeting on the third Monday at 5:00, I don't know who, but somebody